702, call to order the November 1st Planning Board meeting 2018. We will, you are alternate for tonight in our voting. We shall approve the minutes of the October 18th meeting. If you have looked at them, or please quickly do look at them.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October 18th as written.
All in favor? And the minutes pass unanimously.
Just have one minute suggestion.
Yep.
On page one, in, under the Approval of Minutes section, second paragraph, maybe toward the end of that, it would be helpful to the reader who wasn't in attendance there, that something on the order of, it was indicated to Tom that Richard LeVie had indicated in his submissions to the board that he proposed not to have retail sales on.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tom, I'm, I'm a little bit...
Oh, I'm sorry, second paragraph, under Approval of Minutes section.
Yeah.
Starting with T. Cashin stated.
Tom, stated, yeah.
Okay, and the last sentence in that, because the thought isn't expressed within what's existed there, might read something like, and this would be an additional sentence, "It was indicated to Tom that Richard LeVie had indicated on his submissions that they proposed to have no retail sales." In other words, it wasn't because of any questioning that the board or I did pertain to their authority to impose conditions that might fall under the heading of interference of trade. I did express that idea, but I was corrected in my assumption that we had set the retail sales prohibition as a condition. Richard himself had indicated...
He did, you're absolutely right.
He volunteered up front.
Yeah, he volunteered up front. Okay, well, these were accepted as they were, so we're gonna, we should've done that before. Brenda, is there a way of doing that?
I would just ask for a motion to amend the original motion to accept the proposed change.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. So I will ask for a motion to amend the original acceptance of the minutes going down to, in regards to paragraph two, beginning Tom Cashin stated, ending with interference of trade.
So moved.
Second.
In favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I would like a motion to correct paragraph two. Tom, could you please, so we get the wording.
Wasn't it really a correction?
The addition?
There's an addition.
An addition, okay.
I don't recall what was it, the suggestion.
Tom would like to include Richard LeVie's statement that he, that on the original application, he had proposed no retail sales.
All in favor? opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have no old business on the table. Under new business, we have a report to the Board of Selectmen, which will take place, we are on the agenda for their next meeting, which will be, oh, not September, Brenda, that is gone. We've gone by there.
Who's meeting tomorrow?
Selectmen.
It's on Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 7th. And that report, in a nutshell, is to present our updated bylaws, and also report on what we have done in the fiscal year 1718. And I think Brenda just gave all of you a copy of, these are all conditional use in best practical locations that we have permitted this year. And you'll see 20, and on the backside, the zoning ordinance amendments, which were passed by the, these were passed by the voters at the annual town meeting in June. And that's on the ADU, Section 5.14.1.1, Section 1.4.7/1.4.7.2, nonconforming lots, Section 5.9, mineral exploration and mineral extracting industry, and Section 5.19, timber harvesting in the resource protected districts. So we've done a lot of work in six months, and since we are going to report on the 7th, I would like to get an outline on what the board feels, how we will present this. And we don't have a lot of time, you know, to do it, but, you know, it doesn't have to be long. It is requested by the Selectmen that all of us be there who can be there, and their meetings start at 5:00.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think it'll be a very interesting meeting, all in all.
Is this the report Joyce is going to go into the town report?
No.
Exactly.
It is, this is going to go into the town report, but this is, you know, at the beginning of every meeting, they want chairman report or committee reports. This committee hasn't done that for some time, so we're doing it. You know, we're getting more in line with everything. And, you know, we have to be prepared to answer some questions, and I think it's very good to let them know, well, one of the things on this are the, let's see, we have, I believe we have the Ashen Bowls.
That would be on the one that's coming, we'll get tomorrow. So I will give you a similar report from July 1 to...
To present.
To present.
Okay. And, you know, it's not that we meet one, well, Monarch is here. It's not that we met one time to discuss Monarch, stamped it, and they're gone. You know, these take time. They can take several months. I mean, well, in fact, with the Ashen Bowls, we would now be on, oh, Tom, you remember with the campground, how many months we'd be, maybe?
How much?
Working on their permit?
For...
For the campground.
Dan and Jane?
Yeah.
It seemed like we started in the early spring.
In the early spring, so, you know, it could easily be coming on to six months on one project, you know, that, you know, collecting everything we need to collect and doing our due diligence, so it gives, it gives us time to go out there and show what we do, you know, and how we are sort of husbanding the town in a proper way, and watching growth and everything.
Is this everything?
Sorry?
Is this everything?
No.
Okay. I was gonna say, 'cause I know that there's a few things I'm seeing that are missing.
Right, this is not everything. Brenda's gonna have one tomorrow for us.
Okay.
Are y'all familiar with the big spreadsheet that Brenda has made now available on the site? Brenda, would you like to put it up and show them?
Yes, I would.
The permit one?
Yes.
It's everything.
One of the other towns called and wanted to know if I would send a template, they want to use the same thing, so I was very happy with that. And I can't tell you how often people will mention that they have that information from that spreadsheet for whatever reason, you know, they say, "Well, the name is cutting trees and I don't see that there's a permit out on it." They actually checked for that, so the people are really going there. I'm really happy.
We're happy too.
Good. There's a lot of information over there.
I have been told by a source who will remain nameless, that we all know, that because of things like this, that our CEO has about 1,000 deputies in town now.
So this is the, this is the spreadsheet, and as you can see, this started, maybe I can make it a little bigger for you, I don't know.
There you go.
Does that help a little?
Yeah.
Right. And this is every permit, and it, 'cause you can see the building permits actually have 1819-2. Everything else, what we call the trade permits, the electrical, the gas, the mechanical, all of those, I carry the numbers over there, only because if I put all the numbers over here, you could never. So this is, this just gives you an idea of everything that's been going on since July 1, and then I try to put it up every Friday. I update it every Friday. I didn't this last Friday, you can see on the bottom, as of October 19. I didn't last Friday, 'cause we'd only done two permits all week. So then I try to do a breakdown, this is the fees that were generated since July 1. Doesn't mean we've collected them. Sometimes we have permits out there that don't get picked up, so that doesn't mean it's actually cash in hands, but it's the fees that have been generated.
What's that number now?
56685. So, and I think...
That's since July 1st.
Since July 1st.
July 1st. And then I break down each permit, like you can see, the growth permits right there are at 30. So I try, it just encapsulates the whole department, what's going on, you know, I think that gives you a good idea of what's happening in town.
Yeah.
So, so the actual building permits are at 46, and I went back and looked last year, and actually, we were a little bit ahead of last year, but it seems like we're doing bigger projects this year. So this is, there's a lot of information here if you...
Brenda, I can't read it too well, but is it broken out, what's the term we were using before the meeting started? Also seasonal upgrades or whatever? What's the term?
Generally, like you can see over here, I did seasonal conversion, the Matthews did a seasonal conversion. Over in the notes, I tried to just put a really quick of what it is. The growth permits, we don't break that down, whether that's a new unit. Now, we have 11 new units this year, you can see there's 11 new starts, that's actually new starts.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, and also, remember that the growth permits fiscal year is January 1 to December 30, whereas everything else is July 1 to June 30, so the growth permits kind of, I wish we could switch that around so it would line up better.
Why can't we?
I think we can. I think maybe as, like, next July 1, maybe we could start back at 1, and just be very careful that in that particular 18-month period, we don't inadvertently go over the 30.
I guess my question would be, is this the policy, it's not an ordinance, is that what I mean?
I don't think so.
I don't think it's an ordinance.
I think it's just really accounting.
It's, that was set back when we were doing our fiscal years, January 1 to December 31, and then when we changed to the line of...
That probably just didn't...
That was never brought along.
And because probably at that point, this is the first year that we were up at 30, I mean, a couple of years ago, we got to 19, and we thought that was, wow, we were really, so, but Ken said originally that January 1, people can't do it.
They did, yes, they come to the apple.
I had two sons, I had two sons around.
And if you can see, the growth permit form that we do, there's actually not only a date, but a timestamp, because it was, it was that critical.
Yes.
So, you know...
They would've liked it then if it went July 1.
Right. It just would've been jumping on July 1. Right. So we put this up, like I said, I try to every Friday, and originally, the reason for that is because I had taken a class that, and it says right on our actual permits, that if you start this project before 30 days is up at your own risk, because people do have the right to challenge that permit. So the class that I took said you should have some kind of a venue where people can see what's going on. I would hope people don't start challenging, but who knows?
Good question. Can we assume, given the fact that there's 11 new units coming there, and there were 30 growth permits, can we assume that 19 of those were either seasonal conversions?
It's because of the overlap, yeah. Because that throws me off when I do my year-end report and I'm not thinking, I think, why doesn't that, that should match? It's not gonna match perfect, because remember, those seasonal conversions aren't listed as a new unit, because usually, nothing has, they don't, nothing actually changes with the structure, so it's not a new structure.
Yeah.
Usually.
So is there a column for seasonal conversions? I can't see it.
There isn't, because there really isn't a permit for that. They do have to, the state requires that they're septic, they do a seasonal conversion septic, which is just generally, it's page one of the SSWW form that just, and there is criteria the state has imposed on that, you can't have waivers, and so not everything is up, not everything on the lake is a candidate for seasonal conversion for that reason. So I haven't, because that's not really a permit.
Yeah. So Joyce, this is something that would go to the Selectmen to change?
No, 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 no.
Or we could just do a, I mean, who changes it?
Changes what's on?
How are they recording?
The fiscal year.
The fiscal year.
I think it's just an accounting thing, I think, I mean, I don't, I just...
I would call it a recording.
I think that's, it's really just to make very, very sure that we, because the ordinance says, I believe, the 35.
Yeah.
That number must've been carved in stone somewhere.
Yeah, the ordinance says 35.
It is, I, the ordinance does.
I would think that we can change that, we would just have to be very careful during that, it would be that 18-month overlay that we didn't...
Right, but it would get you out of this mess...
It really would.
...come July 1.
Yes.
It would make it a lot easier.
Yeah.
So, everything seems to take a lot of time to do, and I would think that it's just something that if we, whoever can do that, does it right off, so they'll make sure that it's different.
I think maybe we should start as, maybe on the radar of July 1 or the next fiscal year start, so that everybody's starting back on.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But, but the way things move, things get lost in the shuffle, and we could be June next year and say, geez, we were gonna do that, we didn't. And so I guess, I guess this is why I say, maybe Kenny would know how we move forward to change it.
I think Ken will just say that it's just the way, the way that we account for it and we can do that. Maybe we have to make a notice, because especially now that people know out in the community that there's only five growth permits left, and really, there's what, 10 weeks?
10 weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, and don't forget those permits, well, it's 30 days, that puts us into next year.
Right.
And the permits are also good for...
The permits are good, the building permits are good for one year, start something two years to finish.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that maybe it might be a good idea to make a notice out in the community that, you know, as of July 1, we're going to start, you know, matching up the fiscal years. I don't know why it would make a difference, but because we still have to be very careful for that period of time that we don't go over what would've been 30.
Well, I would say, let's say a check, we can't answer what is, and what is on it.
I think he'd be very happy with that.
And if we can just do it, I just think it'd be good politically, when Joyce makes a report to the Selectmen, to say that we're doing this, and so as of next year, we're gonna start, and that way there, it's out there in the public.
Exactly.
And the Selectmen know what's going on, so if somebody calls up the town administrator or the Selectmen, they'll know what we've done.
I think it's more easily trackable.
Much more. It would, it would make the report more meaningful, because you don't have to remember all those nitty-gritty things that...
I guess it's kind of like the bylaws.
Yeah.
You just have to look at stuff and see what's working and what isn't working, and move forward.
And I think as long as there's, you know, transparency and everybody knows what you're doing and why you're doing it.
Right.
And don't forget, Brenda created this report. This wasn't something that she was told to, or we had to, or we are compelled to do.
Boy, I appreciate that.
So, I mean, you know, kudos to Brenda for doing that.
And this will make it easier for her.
And this will make it much easier.
This makes sense.
Yes, Tom?
I think if you look on page 85, yellow book, 5.23.5, send a message to me that we can run this up the flag at the town meeting.
23.5?
5.23.5, page 85.
We have a new book. We have a new book.
The yellow?
Oh, excellent, Tom.
Light years away.
Red book?
Page 78 in the red book.
Page 78?
Yeah, in the red.
You see, that does say calendar year, so maybe that's just a change that will...
Yeah, so that's something we're gonna have to, I wish we could do in the June meeting and start July 1.
Absolutely. Well, I think if we bring it upstairs, and say this is something we'd like to do, have it ready for June meeting, go forward with it.
And even, it would be ideal, really, that if there is a special town meeting between now and then, if maybe you could just even piggyback that, then we can have it all clean and ready for July 1, but otherwise, now...
Can you do ordinances as part of the town meeting?
You can, you can.
Really?
Yeah.
Does it just put a certain order?
It says in here, you can at any meeting.
Yeah.
Really?
Chip said that they always tried not to, because they didn't want to look like he was speaking something through, but, but this is really just an accounting thing, I would think, but...
Which I would've always accused Chip of doing.
I bet he's watching.
Chip has said, yeah, Dennis is telling the truth.
I was just gonna say, yes, Dennis tries to tell the truth all the time. So as far as a, a report on the 7th, that could be in forward planning.
Yeah, because we wouldn't be able to do it.
Oh, yeah.
We could do it at the school town meeting.
Right, but...
Yeah, that would be a good one to do, that's in April.
In April, right. But forward planning, we, we want to address changing the, what do we, what are we calling this?
The calendar, the issuance year of the growth permit.
Yes, the issuance.
From calendar year to the town's fiscal year.
Year.
But the special town meeting they're gonna have, hopefully, they're gonna have it within a couple of weeks, that sure isn't, we have to have a couple of care.
You still have, you have to have a couple of care.
Sure. But will you tell them this is what we intend to do?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I mean, because like, we will mention, and, which we'll get to in a little bit, on the comprehensive plan that we are also working on, I see if I can pull one out really quick and simple, changing or studying, I want to be very careful with my wording here now, because we're not rewriting, we're not changing, we are bringing up to date.
Word updating.
We are updating, particularly, well, if you go to page nine, Roman numeral line dash 22, number 11 says, incorporate scenic views into the subdivision and site plan review, blah, blah, blah. Responsibility, planning board, timeframe, 2005. So we're gonna look at those, where we have been given a direction to look at something on a timeframe, that that's what we're looking at, to see, you know, the relevance, maybe, you know, it might be something totally different that doesn't even apply anymore.
Or wasn't ever applied.
Or any of those things, exactly, you know, exactly. And I mean, you can go through and see, like, there's one with conservation and planning, there's, here's another one, limit development density over high-yield aquifers and valuable soil types. Responsibility, planning board, timeframe, 2006. So if we're looking at those, that, we've been given the time to do it, and we are now looking at them. Doesn't mean it's gonna be done ASAP, it doesn't mean it's, you know, who wants, but we are gonna do our due diligence. I mean, just, just on this page alone, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, preceding page 7, 8, just those two pages, eight things that we have been given a time to do. It says responsibility, planning board, and we will, you know, we're gonna work on it, and come up with a consensus of, is it fine the way it is? Is there something that needs to be changed? Have other ordinances, or have we gotten word from the state, like on the forestry thing, that we're not in compliance, if we don't change this, we're not in compliance with the state, so, you know, we better do that. Because the other, and the other thing that is in the pipeline, again, is our ordinances. And I think we saw that the other day, when we had three contradictory ordinances that we tried to fill in, because if our ordinances don't agree with our comprehensive plan, it's, we're in trouble.
With which precedence?
So, I mean, it's never been a problem for it, but who wants a problem?
Man, there's a lot of gray.
Yeah.
Gray.
Enough of...
When you get right into it, there's a lot of gray that maybe we could make it black and white, some of it.
Exactly.
Not everything, but some things.
I mean, I'm, we're getting off subject a little bit here, but I've, I've been reading, and I usually like mystery books, but I've been, sometimes this is a mystery, because some of the things I'm, I'm looking at in here are like, you know, and I'm usually doing it between 10 and midnight, it's too late to call Tom, because, because there's a map, and it says this road or that road, and I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking like, that road doesn't seem to go that way anymore, and, well, the name of that road changed, it's, but thank God that's not under our purview, we don't have to, you know, to worry about those things. People with more, you know, more familiarity can handle those, but we get our part of it done. And that, though, being, all that being said, what we'll do is a report that we give on Wednesday night, will, that is part of our forward planning as well. You know, we focus on, on these, you know, the permits that we've issued, you know, and we do have to be prepared if people, well, how could you, you know, how could you give Tom a permit for that? You know, he's in resource protected area. No, he isn't, you know, and it's this, and it fits all the criteria, and these are the conditions, so we have to be, you know, and of course, people aren't gonna use names, but I think you understand where I'm going that way, just to, as Dennis says, so things aren't gray, they're pretty much black and white. And while we've never, or we haven't been dragged aboard on any of these things, it's one of the first things a judge will say in court, you are not in compliance with your... with your comprehensive plan.
I mean, we don't want everything exactly black and white, because...
Well, no, but...
The lawyers need to make a living to it.
Well, but...
I just don't wanna, you know, move them out of the town or anything, you know.
Well, what is it, Tom?
Brenda, um, inquire with Lee Jay, a man from the, so, I mean, I can remember, and Yola, you might remember this, initially, they had a kind of a manual of how to approach the notion of, uh, making a complaint for the town.
Those guidelines, yeah, they were distinct guidelines.
It might help us to kind of formulate a plan of how we're gonna do this. I mean, we're not gonna be inventing the wheel here.
Not at all, Tom, and I don't want anybody thinking that. We, we are not inventing the wheel. We are updating and, you know, additions, subtractions, however you wanna call it.
Fine tuning.
Fine tuning, uh, what we have in front of us.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's things in here that's been accomplished.
Exactly.
That, um, if, I guess you can leave it in there, but it's a wasted space, because it's already been done and accomplished.
It, it has been done, exactly.
And we have a record of, like, this con plan, so when we get whatever, you know, some changes and stuff made and updated, um, that would just go in the same file as the original.
Exactly.
So, it should be there forever, it's just...
And I think for the planning board, and for building and for growth, one of the things that stuck out to me when I was reading it, when this was done, the, um, medium age was thirty-four point seven, and it's now forty-seven point something. Um, that's a big, at thirty-four, you're looking at building and spending money a lot differently than you are at forty-seven. You know, forty-seven, you've probably gotten your first ad from AARP, you know, to join us, because...
And a big teller of that is the school population.
In the school population.
That's a big teller of what the age thing is in town.
And, I mean, it, this shows very clearly, like, we are really, it's surprisingly, it said we should have, like, from time this was written until, um, in the next twenty years, say, uh, we should have an additional two hundred and fifty plus or minus units, and we nearly do. We nearly do. But what we don't have is affordable senior housing. We don't have, you know, anything like that.
There's a big section in here, I mean, that, that, I guess, I don't know, we kind of ignore, I guess, about that.
Right. You know, and, you know, the medium house price, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, well, I don't think there's anything you can buy.
No, it's definitely a little more than that.
You know, for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand in town. So, you know, those...
Two thousand ten was up around two hundred.
Mm-hmm. So, those, those are all things when we, when we start looking at our direct responsibility, that we should have in the back of our minds to, um, to go forward. You know, uh, this, and what, and what do, what do we offer for an aging population? That's, we have to consider that as well. So, anyway, that, but, so we'll call Lee Jay. Brenda will get that, the guidelines. I actually think I have a copy of them. But, um, to this, so I'd like some suggestions on what we as a board are gonna say to the, first, we'll present the bylaws. I've already talked to Jennifer about them. She had no problem with us presenting them, and I told her the biggest change we made was we went from sixty days to thirty days on replacing a member. Uh, the selectmen, here's a copy, they'll get a copy of the old one with copies of the new one. Now, this might sound silly, but should they each get a copy, or should I just send one to the board of selectmen? I'll send them each one, okay? And point out the biggest difference, which was, you know, and let them know that we have, Jennifer asked me, we have ratified them as a board, we have all signatures on them, and, um, that's the biggest thing. And then just to fill in, we've issued these twenty permits plus whatever, um, you get from, you know, July one, and the changes to the ordinances that we've made. And, uh, any questions that they have?
You know, I, I still mention that.
And then the forward.
The calendar.
Calendar year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just give them a heads up.
Maybe you could have a list of things that you'd like to look at, and that'd be one of them.
Well, it will, you know, we'll have a list of things that, that are...
You're gonna work on the con plan, you're gonna look at that.
Yeah, we'll look at ordinances, um, which is actually in our bylaws that we have to look at them.
When you've done the subdivision, you've done your bylaws.
Yeah, we've done the subdivision, we've done the bylaws, so just be, keep it, bringing, you know, so people know, there's gonna be just so much transparency, that's the whole thing.
Do you think there would be any good reason to put the con plan on the website?
The con plan is on the town website.
It is. Oh, okay, I didn't think it was.
No, it is on the town website.
Good.
Misspellings and all.
I didn't type that.
Yeah, we know, we know, but...
I think I did that one.
Was it you, Dennis?
Yeah.
I hope you've improved.
One finger at a time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I won't ask you how to spell weather then, but it'll... But, um, so, please, I, I would like any, you know, suggestions on, 'cause this will not, I want this ready for, for Wednesday, but I'm not gonna just write it without you guys throwing in some, you know, I need, this, this, because this will come from the board.
I don't want you to make two cents worth.
Okay. You have the...
I don't want to take that.
From, from Dennis, no, no, from Dennis.
That's a talk.
From, from Dennis, we're gonna have the forward planning, and we will list the calendar year change, the, uh, the comprehensive plan, and the ordinances.
Reviewing and updating?
Reviewing and updating, correct.
Um, in the past, Kenny has done this presentation. Well, in the past, it hasn't been done, but at town meeting, you know, the preliminary hearings, town meeting, when they're grilling the findings and warrants committee, there was all of the department heads, um, in my recollection, he's the guy that...
Yeah, that's, that's department heads at the town meeting. This is chairman at the board of selectmen.
And I think he does that under his hat as town planner.
Yeah, director of planning, right, yeah.
What, what they've been asking for, Tom, is they want, uh, the chairman of different committees in town, to, and department heads to do a weekly report at the selectmen's meeting, so it's out there. And, uh, obviously, the time of their meetings.
Right.
It wouldn't be fair to can't, haven't come in unless he absolutely has to.
Right. And this, this kind of thing is...
The planning board.
Is the planning board.
Yeah.
And committee chairman is, is what they're asking for. Town meeting is all his, as director of planning. Um, and it is a way for the town to see, I mean, we have situations going on in town right now where...
It's good PR, Tom.
It, it, what do they do? Do they do anything? People don't know. So, it, it's very good, um, PR for us.
What's, what's the average, um, probably, for somebody that comes in for a conditional permit? Is it, is it, is it at least three meetings?
Uh, I can maybe, um, we, we've got Christina back with us, so maybe Christina and I could go over the agendas and just get you an overview of, of what the average is.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I think, that was kinda like, uh, awestruck a little bit by, is the amount of times that, uh, say, like, Muse came here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it was three or four times, or whatever it was.
Yeah, two months.
And, and plus the sidewalk and...
And the public hearing.
How long we worked on that?
And what?
Monoc Mountain.
And Monoc Mountain was months and months and months.
Yeah.
But, I mean, they come in, or they see Ken, they come in, they see Ken, it comes to us, do we need a sidewalk? Yes, we need a sidewalk. When can we do the sidewalk? Then they come back, and then might, they might come in with an attorney, or, uh, you know, if it's, they're building something, it could be their contractor, who's their lead. Um, and then, okay, we want this, we want that. Uh, and depending on what it is. I mean, we just did, um, a conditional use for, that went very quickly, the best practical location.
For sure.
You know, went very quickly, but what if we're working on a subdivision?
How engaged the applicant is to it.
You know, how engaged the applicant is.
You know, how, and a lot goes into it before it even gets here.
Right.
They meet with me, I go over the application, because I have a pretty good idea what Ken's gonna be looking for. They don't even get to Ken until we have all of that information, and then they don't even get to you until Ken has what he needs, because it's a waste of everybody's time. So, you know, the, it's a tip of iceberg.
Well, I came here three times. So, that's six weeks.
And I think Muse came here three times.
And you came at least...
Plus, we had not only the sidewalk, we had to have a public hearing.
We had to have public hearings.
There's a lot that goes into it.
That's, yeah.
That's five meetings or sessions for one conditional use permit.
Right, exactly.
So, I can't, I mean, like you say, you can check, Brenda, but, I mean, the average of three isn't unreasonable.
No, I think, I think this...
That's one, that's, that's really good.
I think if you've done three, yeah. And, and there are some times when we are completely mindful, that we could be holding up a business. You know, I mean, everything could be okay. We know, this looks wonderful, this looks this, okay, when's the public hearing? And public hearing requires two weeks' notice, fourteen days?
Well, it, it needs to be in the paper ten days prior to it happening, so two weeks is, by the time I get it to the newspaper.
So, that, that's two weeks that have gone by. You know, and we try to be cognizant of that and have our sidewalk before that, so that that's not last, the last thing, holding it up. Um...
I mean, that's a frustration for me, that it does take so long.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't know what you'd do to shorten it, but, uh, if I was gonna do a business, uh, I mean, have you decide in June you're gonna do it, and you can start it, and what, that doesn't make much, make much sense for a long-term business.
No, exactly.
And we try to give them an idea when they bring in the application. You know, we outline what the process is and what to expect, so, um, they know right from the get-go pretty much how long it's gonna take with the public hearing, and of course, the public hearing, then it goes to a butted notices, and...
Yeah.
So, they know that, so hopefully, they can plan things accordingly too.
Yeah, like, if you, the other thing that we have access to from home, your home computer, is if you wanna know, um, who, um, you know, I'm doing something to my house, and you wanna know who my butters are, you can click on it and again. Just drop, go to that dropdown, and you can find out who my butters are. And those people have to, uh, you know, get notices, and, and I mean, it can, you know, I think one of the other things is, is years ago, probably had planning board meetings once a month. You know, there are some towns in Maine that meet, their planning board meets when they have an issue, you know, and it might be four times a year. But it's like the zoning board here, I, you know, zoning board hasn't met for many years here. Uh, but, you know, we meet twice a month. We don't know. It might, there might come the day that we need to meet more than twice a month. You know, some planning boards meet once, once a week. You know, please God, I don't wanna do that, you know. It wasn't a suggestion, you know, but, but, um, you know, we, and we have some vital issues going on. But I will put this on, uh, put together, put this together. I will send you all emails, so that you can see it, 'cause that will give us time. Um, I mean, Monday, Tuesday is election day, but you can, you know, we can all, uh, you know, get together. And since this is a report, it is not a matter of voting something on the planning board, I am comfortable sending the letter via, via email to you. So...
So, you're gonna have like a three-pronged approach to your report?
Yes.
One is how much work we do.
Yeah.
Uh, two is, um, not having an impact on businesses, and three, transparency.
Yeah.
As themes.
As themes.
Not having a negative impact.
And, yeah, not having a negative impact, right. And, and, you know, in, in things I call housekeeping, which we've accomplished bylaws, and we'll be working on the other things. So, does that sound on the outline agreeable to everyone?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I will send them all. Um, we'll get in touch with you, you know. We'll do that, okay?
Thank you.
There you go. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Tom. Thank you.